So, welcome everyone that's here this evening and also those of you who will in the future watch on YouTube. Thank you for joining us. This is the Minnetonka City Council meeting for April 4th, 2022. Our first order of business is reminder to turn off your cell phones or silent mode or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. Did that? Next, would you join me for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in peace, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, I'll start with introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortensen, John Chomperlin, and Kathleen Refkin. Ann McGregor is absent this evening. Staff present, our city engineer Allison Fauski, our public works superintendent Gary Peters, and our city clerk Don Moscow. And to my right, we have city, the, and Ally Paul Foose, director of administration. And then we have Brian Grimm, our finance director. David Abel is our community development director. And then we have Sarah Sensala with Kennedy and Graven, our attorney. And back with us, welcome back, Paul Chief Falls, after 10 weeks or more of absence, but you were working hard and you will tell us about that later. So, welcome Chief, glad to have you back. With that, I'm going to make one minor change to our agenda where we will not be having a special presentation this evening. Ms. Navratil agreed to come back at our next meeting, so she will be here to do that presentation at our next meeting. With that, I don't have any changes to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve with that change?
Some of them.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Chomperlin. Mr., Ms. Mortensen made that motion and Mr. Chomperlin seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Next, we'll move on to persons to be heard. We have none there. We'll move on to our consent agenda items. I will read them. One, our A is approve our work session meeting. Are there any you want to, need to remove?
I'd like to remove F and talk about it under business items if possible.
Okay, approved code text amendment for chapter five, section 500. Okay, so, any other ones? So we have, that remains, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from March 21st, 2022. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from March 21st, 2022. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to approve the change in employment status for city clerk Don Matzko. E is a resolution to approve our variance at 4340 Highland Road. We'll move on to G, is a resolution to approve the election of one-time standard allowance of revenue loss for American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA dollars. H is an ordinance to approve, for, is 477 approved code text amendment for chapter nine, section 920.07, section 920.19, and section 920.21. And then under that, I is a resolution to approve the ordinance number 477 by title and summary. I is a resolution to approve conditional offer of letter for Patrick Johnson as a new police officer. And J is a resolution to approve a grant agreement with Hannibal County for midco broadband network expansion project. I just want to say briefly, thank you so much to Ally Paul Foose for her work on this and also our county commissioner Kevin Anderson for his help on this and Hannibal County for their participation in this. K is a resolution to approve our budget transfer from general fund to our CIP equipment fund. That concludes our consent agenda items except for F. Is there a motion to approve all of those except for F?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chomperlin. And Ms. Refkin seconded that. Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Ms. Refkin.
With regard to F, subdivision seven B, so page 47 of the packet with regard to the sod, I still don't like that there's no exception in there to lay sod during that time period if we need it.
Okay.
If it's a particularly wet summer, there would be no reason not to allow exceptions. That's my comment on it.
Yeah, sure.
I think we should allow some exceptions so there's room for people to put sod down if we aren't in a drought. Because there's the blanket, you know, it cannot be placed basically between June 11th and August 9th, no matter what.
Yep.
Living in a neighborhood that has sod that needs to go down, I don't like the dust that comes with not having it for all summer.
Is, um, do you have some language?
I don't know how you'd word that, just with exceptions may be allowed pending case, on a case-by-case basis, something like that.
Why don't we do this? Let's pull it for now. Can we bring it back at our next meeting and in the meantime, we can kind of work on that? I know that there were some other concerns about not being able to seed or sod anytime during that time period, so.
The planning commission also had a discussion on that area.
Okay.
Ultimately approved what was here, but they did have a discussion on that.
Something should be allowed if there's no drought or, all right. With, does that give you enough direction staff or do you want more direction?
Madam Mayor, I think, I think we could certainly look at providing some options for council to consider to allow for an exemption and what would be the appropriate means to implement that. We can certainly talk to the city attorney's office for that too.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we won't take action on that tonight. With that then, thank you. We will now move on to our business items and that's a concept sketch plan review of the proposed subdivision located at South County Road 110 West and east of Cardinal Cove Drive. Mr. Abel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. As you mentioned, this is a concept sketch plan review. As you all may recall, the applicant did submit a concept plan for a possible 32-lot subdivision of this site. That was reviewed by the planning commission on January 24th of this year and you as the city council reviewed that on February 22nd of this year. The revised plan in your packet and on the screen, the concept shows 23 lots, which is a reduction in density from 3.0 to now 2.4 units per acre. This, as revised, the plan would still require a comprehensive plan amendment and some sort of rezoning as well that would go along with that. As you can see from the plan, there are some improved changes to the concept. However, as noted in the staff report, the, the concept does not provide substantial more site amenities and public values that could be achieved in a, that could otherwise be achieved in a conventional street land use development. So, there does not appear to be a benefit to the rezoning as suggested to a PUD, which was something that was discussed previously with the planning commission and again at their last meeting, the planning commission discussed that as well, that there just doesn't seem to be a benefit to going to the PUD zoning with that. The revised plan, as I said, that has been improved, but certainly doesn't seem to meet the criteria to go to that, that PUD concept. So, might be looking more towards a conventional, straight-up development type approach to this if it were to move forward. Lastly, as noted in the report, there are still some concerns over the proposed street layout and the proposed intersections. The offset streets are undesirable and the proximity of the public roadway to County Road 110 is, is concerning, as well as the intersection of County Road 110 and Halsted Avenue is, is a better location, but with that right out only is, is not an ideal scenario there. As noted, this is a concept sketch plan. It does not require any formal action from the council, but it is beneficial for the council to provide the applicant with guidance if the applicant were to move forward with a, a future application. So with that, I'll turn it to council with any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Otherwise, I think the applicant is here if you wish to make some comments.
I'm John Sonic with Charles Cut, 5417 Center Belt Drive in town.
I'm Steve Chowski with Somtech Engineers, 100 White Water Drive in town.
And, Kritmane isn't here tonight, he's in the hospital, so, otherwise he would be here. So I'm just kind of standing here for him today.
All right.
I'd like to go through the lists that you have. What we did was do the best we could with trying to work through county requirements as far as that right, or the right out only, and trying to also get an appropriate amount of lots here for, to make the project work. As far as we brought down the amount of lot comp that we had, that we showed before. If it's not a PUD, is there a way to make the normal ordinances that you have with a variance work in that situation? Again, if you're not finding any public satisfaction to a PUD, it doesn't sound like you ever been wanting. So, at that point, is, what, what do we need to do to come up with the right answer for a zoning district that would work out here? It's zone, you know, high density. We're way under high density. And so at that point, could you, and that, that's why we were here last night and thought we could have a good plan to help facilitate bringing in, because you had talked about wanting to get over on the Cardinal Cove Road. The county didn't want to have both accesses next to each other, so they were insistent that we, you know, didn't have the two accesses like we had. And the people at Halsted Avenue have been accessing down that road for as long as the people on Cardinal Cove, probably even longer. So we're trying to work through the best situation and giving the city also what they were asking for as far as, you know, access to Cardinal Cove. Giving the county, which is what they asked for, the right out in that situation. And then bringing a park into the, into the area, which is something that Nicholas had told us that you needed to add, you know, in your planning department and that. So, and, and the biggest part is we all look at a flat piece of paper right here, and I drove off to the site before I came here.
It's not flat.
It is not flat.
It's not flat.
And so all the wishes and wants of, you know, what we might want to do and what works on paper is, there's a reality to how, how we can manage to get houses on here and roads to connect other roads and stuff. So, I guess, more than willing to help work through the situation with you, we just need some better guidance as to, you know, how we can do that in the zoning that you are willing to let us work with, you know, but how are you going to help us guide through the situation?
Okay, thank you. Council questions for the applicant? I'm assuming you're the engineer too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'll start with some comments. So, I like the fact that there's less. So there's 23 now versus 32, that's good. Also, yes, you listened and there's the access to Cardinal Cove, the, but there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. And somehow, the county has to work with us because this road that's running parallel with 110 is not going to work.
Is there, is there a reason for that?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
It's, it has to do with safety. It's really bad when you have a city road running right next to, parallel a busy county road. It has to do with headlights, it has, we, it's, it's not a very good situation. And, and I've been in communities where this has been done. We've done it, had to do it here in one instance, and actually, there's a bit, pretty big grade differential in that instance. Here, it's not. But, so, maybe there's some work that needs to be done with the county to convince them that this has to be different and it has to be a left and a right exit. It can't just be a right exit out. So that's something that we're going to have to work with on the county.
Well, the, for the topo purposes, we had it as a cul-de-sac, but then we didn't have a second out. And so if we could go back to the original, what was the road, what is that road called that goes back to Halsted? Does it have a name?
Halsted.
Is that still Halsted?
It's Halsted, yeah.
So Halsted Avenue where it connected to 110, we just had a more private street there because in order to get the topo to work on the land, I, I'd still really need to have that, that road that followed along 110. It just had a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, but you had houses. You had houses along 110 and then you had the road between the two, two houses.
I agree with that, but the topo doesn't work with that.
Okay, well.
In other words, that, that's the part that I'm, again, we, I went through it again. I wanted to make sure I looked at it one more time. And, and again, I, I can't get a road in, in the middle as much with, and still get a desirable lot out in the situation, is that a good way to put it? In other words, nobody's buying tuck unders, right? And so to back up to the, you know, the, the pond level is set up where you're driving in on the high side, the pond level's down at the walkout side.
Right.
If, if I'm driving in at the pond level, I'm driving in, you know, down with, in, as a tuck under house, and it's just, that'd be a really hard sell.
I mean, there's no, there's no doubt. It's a difficult topography. I just think that we too, as a city, have to take other things into consideration as well. So, those would be, and then the, my other question more to the engineer is, the pond in the middle, I've never seen water run upstream. So, that's going to be a difficult engineering feat to try and get the water from those lots to the south of the pond, to run up into the pond.
No, but over where the beach house is, we can still have another storage facility there to manage that water.
And that could or will have to be worked out, of course, before you.
What if we require a fencing or something along the county road there? So you wouldn't have to worry about lights or anything and no one on County Road 10 would know there's a road there.
We're still talking about a right out only. And that's, I don't think that's acceptable.
You'd want a right-in, right-out.
Yeah, you'd want a.
You'd want a right-in, right-out. It's just, the information we got from the county was they don't want a right-out.
Well, like I said, maybe we have to work with the county on that.
Yeah, so I mean, that, we'd be more than happy to have a dual access situation.
Because right now, you have the, I don't know, there's maybe 10 or 12 homes along the Halsted on the lake. And now you're adding 23 more homes and they're all now going to be exiting out of Cardinal Cove. I mean, it's, it's kind of a nightmare.
The entrance ain't off of Cardinal Cove. Yeah, but we, they still leave off the, off our street going out, but I'm more than happy to have you help us with the county for right-of that, absolutely.
And, and as far as, I mean, so then there's a couple of other questions I have, but you guys, do you have questions, comments?
Well, I'm glad the density went down as well. Thank you for that.
What, tell me about lots 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. So 15 and 14 and 13 have a road in front of them? And then 12, is there a cul-de-sac planned for that?
So 11 comes in off Cardinal Cove, so see the little piece of the lot, is there, where do you run the mouse?
Yep, I, I understand, yep.
So that'd be the driveway access for 11. Because part of the situation is the existing homeowner here is staying in lot 12.
Okay.
And so that lot is a, whatever, 20, normal lot. In other words, we had to leave in about $23,000 worth of, of this lot there to stay at that house.
Okay, and, but is there going to be a cul-de-sac there?
At, at the end?
Yeah.
Yep, and, and that's something that, again, we needed to work through, because nobody, that's one of the reasons I drove down there today, everybody just keeps, you know, working off a small halsted. What we did is, is made room for full Halsted Avenue right-of-way. So if you've noticed, on our side of the property line, we've made room for the other half. Because right now, Halsted's only a half a right-of-way. It's a 30-foot right-of-way.
Okay.
So we figured you'd want the other half in a full-sized road.
Okay.
And so we made room for that cul-de-sac down at the end where our beach house was. And then because the front cars down there just really don't have room for it, I'm not exactly sure how to work through that with, with the, you know, rather than just leaving it the way it is where it's accessing.
Well, I understand it's that we know, but I think it needs to be fixed because it's a nightmare for plowing. So, if we have the opportunity to fix it now, we should do that versus, you know, letting it go.
Well, yeah, again, the conundrum is the existing people on the lake side of the road.
Right, right.
I don't, I don't find a, a space for, for the ability to, you know, get that, or an hammerhead or something.
Okay.
Potentially. So that is, yeah, it's something that still needs to be worked.
And then my last, so actually 11 wouldn't qualify, that you would need a pretty significant variance for that because I think we have a, how, how many feet do we need for a frontage?
Yeah, it's a flag lot.
It's a flag, so.
Considered a flag lot, correct. And you're correct that we need a variance.
So the, and then number five, how would that lot be accessed off of that new public road or off of Cardinal Cove Road?
Again, that one would probably be accessed off Cardinal Cove Road. Is, is the frontage wide enough on the front right there?
Well, the reason I ask is because it's so close to the intersection and you don't have a lot of wiggle room there.
To me, the better access would be the driveway off of Cardinal Cove Road, because you don't, you're not going to want a driveway within that first 30 feet of the intersection.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, okay.
And potentially, we can adjust the back corner of five so that 11 gets more frontage.
Right, right, you could swing that or.
Swing that block line and cut the corner a little bit. Because five's a, you know, call it a custom, customized house to fit in on that lot anyway and access it to Cardinal Cove. So those two would come in off of, driveway off of Cardinal Cove Road.
Okay. For now, that's all I have, but I'll let it. Kathleen? I know when, you were at the planning commission meeting, right? And I know this wasn't this kind of put out there at the last minute, so they didn't really have the time to digest it a lot.
The new X, the new right turn only on 110 was added right at the end.
Yeah.
The only other thing the planning commission had, other than they liked the reduction on the lot size, there was some discussion on more green space and didn't, they didn't say where to put it. Lot 11 was talked about.
Well, we're already giving up the entire, now, unfortunately.
That's not us.
And that, and, but we're already giving up a huge piece of the parcel to the apartment and that. And so that's, you know.
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't think they made it a request, but it, there was one of the ones, things, topics that was discussed, discussed. And five was discussed, as mayors alluded to, the access to it, whether it was going to be off Cardinal or not.
Sure.
There still was the concern with the act, with the right turn leaving on 110, and I don't know if there's going to be a way around that.
Yeah, and again, that was input we got from the county just before we came to the planning commission, that's why we made that adjustment, otherwise it still was the cul-de-sac.
So they looked at that, what you proposed to run at Red Law 110 and go out on the far east corner?
No, that was from comments from them, that yes, they would, they would consider a right out rather than the cul-de-sac because they didn't want Halsted to stay where it was located.
Okay.
They wanted the two roads to be farther apart.
How much further apart?
Well, they, the county usually likes 600 to 700 feet apart, and that's where Halsted and Cardinal Cove are.
But you could get that if you swung your public road through 23 and 24, you could get that 600. It's like 500 to 600 feet is what they'd like to see. Here's the other thing I'm looking at, in the future, the property to the north is going to develop and we'd like to see an inter, a four-way intersection there then. So, if you go, so if you swing your road further and shift your, your lots over to the west and shift your road over to the east, I think you could get it going out to 110 and still have a right in and right out, or left in and out.
I see, so maybe between 23 and 22, yeah. And is there currently infrastructure under the road right now, sewer water pipes that come from the lift station?
There is on the existing Halsted Drive.
Right.
There is.
Comes in from 110.
Or Halsted Avenue, there is, down at the lift station, everything comes through there, yes.
So that, you're saying move that up, move the sewer and water and everything up with I get, yeah, so again, we can work through that, find out what the county realum is between the two roads. And you're saying then to the property to the north, that was, that's where you'd like to actually have the intersection for both.
In, in the future, that, that property is going to be developed. They've already asked to come into the MUSA, so at some point, that property is going to be developed and to have a four-way intersection would be better than having this road here as you have it.
Well, it's just that it's slightly across the road.
Right.
So you want the road to meet the, the road up on the tops there, that, I guess the second one from the left?
That's just a driveway right now.
Right.
But somewhere in that area, and the, and the new road going in wouldn't have to be there, I'm just saying, we need to plan for a four-way intersection.
Sure.
To.
Which makes sense.
So more where he had it in the original sketch then.
Well, what we're being.
Not that far over.
It needs to be further east is what he's saying, because the county likes to have about, I thought it was 500 feet.
I've always heard 600 to 700.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is swinging that road around and changing those. The other thing, and I think it could be done, you could beg a little for the county? Okay, no, I'm just kidding.
Again, it's, it's just a matter of working through it.
Right. So, one other comment. One, I want to make it very clear that you need to have an agreement in place with mound should you need to connect to their water.
Sure.
So, that needs to be in place. And then I guess my question too, with all these lots, especially in this very heavily wooded area, you are aware that we have a tree preservation ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that will be adhered to. Okay.
And that's, yeah, those are, again, we kind of need to figure out where we're at with the flat situations and work through the trees.
Okay, and then you will have to work on that pond so that it does drain the whole entire development, not just the lots to the north of it. And now you asked about a PUD. So here's a question, and did the, John, maybe you, did they discuss if there's parkland in mound, we have no control over that.
Right.
So.
It's an association park that we have control, you know, the neighborhood has control.
Yeah, as long as there's an association, right?
It's not a park given to, to the mound, it's a park belonging to this association.
Okay. So what is the city getting out of it? I think that's what the park, the planning commission kept asking is.
Right, they never got to it, but that was the theme that I saw in the question was, what is the, what are, what are we getting out of this? We can't, so parks in mound, but it's not the properties in Minnetonka that we're working with. So that was what they were trying to work around or kind of querying on this mission. Didn't get an answer, I don't know, do we have an answer for that?
I guess the biggest thing that you're getting out of it is your, your, your zone for every resident. I guess the, the biggest thing that you're getting out of it is your, your, your zone for, uh, every residence, right?
Okay, you can just stop there because guess what? Tax base is not a benefit, you know, so.
How many units is this zone for right now?
It's zone for sixty. It.
Right.
We, we approved of.
At this point, we're trying to bring you a less dense site. If otherwise, I think, you know, maybe Kurt's situation is to bring you back to sixty unit site in order to, you know, make things work out. In other words, part of the, you know, what, what's the benefit of the city is taking it back to a nice residential neighborhood versus that, the one that is zone for. In other words, is that, is that the benefit that can get it a PUD?
No.
No?
The answer's no, um, not according to our ordinance. Maybe I could have, David, could you explain maybe, and, or Sarah, what do we consider a benefit?
Well, it's, we've sent, it's an extensive list. There's thirteen plus, uh, values and examples listed in our ordinance that we've sent Kurt and the development team several times in terms of, um, pu- public values. And what, what's the public benefit that the, the city's getting in order to, to go and allow for that flexibility of a, of a PUD? Um, he keeps referring to what is zoned in that higher density. In that scenario, um, they weren't completely clear-cutting the site with trees. They were saving, uh, some trees, not a lot, but they were saving trees. There was more open space. Um, and there, there was reasons given and, and why that was ultimately approved and, and was approved as a PUD. Um, this, similar to, um, recent, um, proposals that were denied by the city, uh, were, were denied because of the, the reasons that you're, you're completely using, utilizing the entire site. You're clear-cutting the site, you're completely grading the site, and that's what's been unsuccessful historically on the site. And why the one that was successful was the sixty units that was approved there. So just a broad view example, there, there is a long list though in our PUD ordinance that explains about the certain values and, and things that the city's looking for. Save, saving trees, saving open space, saving wetlands, significant slopes, um, those sorts of things. In the previous plan, there was, uh, ball, uh, tennis courts, uh, and activities that were, the idea was that was open to the, the area, not just the association. He was, the idea was he was opening that up to the neighborhoods. That was another benefit that was given, uh, to, to the residents. Um, and was, was sold and ultimately approved by the, the council. Um, so tho- those were things that happened in the previous approval.
Right. Yeah, there was like a, so the HOA had pickleball court or something like that. And I think a, and I think a swimming pool. Did they have a pool?
Yeah.
And then they opened it up to the people on Halsted if they wanted to use it at no charge. It was, that was the benefit. So I don't know if that's something you can do with, um, your, um, open space.
Sure.
You might wanna look at that. It would be a benefit, um, to the residents, the twenty-three lots here, but it would also be a benefit then maybe to the neighboring properties as well. I think you're gonna have a hard time saving a lot of trees.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Cause I think it'd be pretty hard. I mean, I think, see, the, the thing the city has to do is we have to look at our ordinances and try and abide by those, because once we start saying deviating from it, then it's, it, it's kind of any, anybody's guess what we're gonna do next kind of thing. Um, but if you look at those thirteen things and you can come back and say, here's, here's a benefit and we've, we're gonna do this or we're gonna do that.
Sure.
I, I think we could look at that.
Okay.
So anything, you're gonna have your work cut out for you. I know that, especially with the, um, stormwater issue. Uh, you've got a lot of stormwater running into this area, so, um, I don't, uh, yeah. We'll see how it works out. You, you might find you have to move your pond, so, but.
Well, we'll, uh, take another shot at it.
Okay. Just one question for the council and just also in case, in case you need to move your pond. Um, are we still open to like a po- private drive? He had before, they had two, um, private drives with the cul-de-sac, something like that. If you, again, depending on where your pond ends up and how big it is. So take a look at it.
Okay.
Keep in mind the water.
Yeah.
And keep in mind the tree preservation.
Yeah.
And, uh, all right.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
It's gonna be interesting to see that pond moved because of the, the flow there and the tuck off, the slope of the land.
I know. Like I said, you have your work cut out for you.
All right.
All right. Okay. Uh, next we have, um, approve our water rate study proposal with David Drown and Associates, Ms. Paulus.
Or, right. Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So yeah, this starts on page ninety for the packet. And, um, based on previous discussions at council meetings, work sessions, um, it was agreed that the, uh, water rate study, seeing our last one had been done in twenty thirteen, was a good thing to do. Um, as far as with all our different, uh, infrastructure potentially projects coming up, as well as just even making sure, um, we're funding and, and cash flowing our water fund with just a lot of the changes that have happened over the last ten years. So, um, I did send out tough to four different firms as far as asking for a, basically a proposal on, on doing a water rate study and completing it sort of by the, the, the summer timeframe, which, um, we did get two back. A third firm said they wish they could have responded, but they just weren't able to swing it in their schedule. So the, uh, the two proposals we did get were included in the packet. One was, um, from, uh, Ellers, um, and Associates, and the other was, um, from David Drown and Associates. Uh, Ellers had done our, uh, previous water rate study back in, in twenty thirteen. Um, but, um, this time around, when we, we compare the two proposals, I think, uh, David Drown Associates' proposal, the thirty-five hundred, I think, makes sense. And I think they, they're a reputable firm. We just signed up to use them for our compensation study. And, um, like even with talking with our, uh, future, uh, city administrator who's starting next week, he's familiar with David Drown, and I think they, they completed a, a rate study on water. Um, might've even been all utilities, but in this case, we're looking just at water, you know, recently or with them. So, um, I'm confident in, uh, proposing or recommending that, uh, we would, uh, enter into the, uh, agreement to do a water rate study if, uh, they quoted thirty-five hundred dollar amount. Um, they did reference doing, um, that Mr. Sweeney, Shannon Sweeney with, yeah, David Drown said they could do a, uh, five hundred dollar maintenance in future years. I guess we could always do that on a as-needed basis. I think the main thing would be to, you know, get a, get a good rate study that looks out the next, you know, ten-plus years as far as, um, being able to match up what we need to do with our utility rates and, you know, potential connection fees and all that kind of stuff as far as revenues and, uh, match it to our, uh, upcoming expenditures, capital expenditures. So, is that, I'll stand for any questions from the council, but otherwise it would be to approve entering into that, uh, water rate study that should be able to be completed. I think they had, uh, it was in the summer timeframe.
July.
July, it was July one, okay, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Questions? Okay. Then do I have a motion? John, question?
No, no questions.
Um, so do I have a motion to approve a resolution, uh, for the utility rate study done by David Drown Associates at a cost of thirty-five hundred dollars?
Sound moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for all. So that completes our business items. We'll move on to administrative items and start with staff reports. Um, I've asked our chief if he would give us a quick rundown, um, of the last ten weeks. Again, welcome back. Glad to have you back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, it's good to be back. Ten weeks, uh, this was an excellent training, uh, very valuable, but it's, that's a long time to be gone, so I'm, I'm glad to be back. Um, so with that, you're, you're all aware, I guess I'd like to just begin by thanking the mayor and council for your support. This is, uh, something that not a lot of people get to do, so it's definitely a privilege and an honor to be able to attend. The FBI National Academy, this is, uh, as you know, the, uh, I guess pinnacle of, of all law enforcement executive training. So, um, it is an honor. The, the instructors there are, are, um, as you can imagine, the best of the best. Many of them are people that are either still FBI agents or retired FBI agents that have worked on notorious cases throughout the years, and so they have firsthand knowledge of all kinds of areas of expertise. And they're, we're very willing to share all of that with, with us. So, um, it was very beneficial in, in that regard. Um, as you know, I, I began, uh, January tenth and graduated on March seventeenth, so ten weeks. There was two hundred and fifty-eight law enforcement officials there. Um, so we were the first full class back, uh, after COVID shut everything down for two years. They had a half class prior to us, but it was, uh, a little bit more limited, uh, or quite a bit more limited than our group. So we were able to, um, participate in everything they had to offer. Uh, our participants came from forty-five states and thirty-two different countries. So there was an international perspective as well, uh, including, um, um, well, a number of countries, but one of our participants was from Ukraine. Uh, so that was a difficult time for him as things, that all started while we were there in session, so. Um, but he was a, an amazing person and, uh, it was really nice to get to know him well. So, and, uh, he is, he was able to finally make it back home, um, and he is safe at this point. So we're all happy about that. That became a, a challenge for him because he couldn't fly into Ukraine. But, um, so, uh, I'll just kinda summarize a few things here, um, because I could go on probably all night if I were to tell you about everything. But, uh, as you know, they're, they make available a, a number of classes, uh, to each of us. Uh, fitness in law enforcement is, uh, something that's mandatory. Everybody there has to participate in that. Young or old, good shape or bad. Um, you certainly had to meet the criteria to get in. If you didn't meet that, you couldn't get in in the first place. So, uh, the work to, to be able to go started long before we got there, uh, just to be able to qualify. Uh, and they didn't waste any time figuring out if you had done that, because on day two or three, they had us out on the track, timing your runs and making you do a bunch of stuff. Uh, we had to remind them that we're not twenty-seven years old anymore, so please be gentle with us. But it was an excellent experience, uh, and they were, the instructors were, were awesome. Um, they're very, very knowledgeable. Um, I personally took, uh, I'll just give you a list of the classes I took. Uh, certainly I was trying to take classes that would benefit, uh, our agency and our city. Um, some of the classes are geared towards very large agencies or state and federal agencies such as terrorism, um, things like that. It doesn't really necessarily apply directly to us here. So, um, I took, uh, the fitness class, effective writing, uh, behavioral science, forensic science, effective leadership for law enforcement, and then wellness in law enforcement.
Did that cover mental wellness, I mean?
Yes.
As well? Okay.
Uh, good question, because, uh, really the focus, uh, of the FBI Academy is, has changed a little bit over the years. It's, it's all about academic and fitness. Um, and so, and now fitness is, is kind of all encompassing. It's about wellness. So the physical piece of that is very, very important, but we've learned, you know, the mental piece or emotional wellness is vitally important as well. And so they talked a lot about that, um, and I can share more about that specifically down the road. Uh, the good news is I learned there's a lot of things that we're doing very well here. Um, but I also learned some areas that we could definitely make improvements, some things that we're addressing maybe on a lower level than we should be, uh, when it comes to wellness and the whole picture. Um, and so I'm excited to share those things going forward. And a lot of the things that would, changes we can make won't necessarily cost us a lot of money. It's just a, a matter of implementing programs and making sure we're having check-ins and things along the way. Um, the challenges, as you know, uh, in law enforcement in the last few years have certainly increased this issue. So we wanna make sure we're keeping an eye on people and doing everything we can to, to monitor and then have resources available. So we have some now, and I think there's some others that we can add. Um, a little bit about our, how, how the system worked, um, it's a very, um, regimented program. So every morning your classes start at seven-thirty AM. You go till four-thirty PM most days. But on a lot of days, several days a week, you have additional presentations or classes in the evening after dinner. So these were very long days.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, uh, you're required to be in all of it. It's all mandatory. So, um, you also have to wear a uniform between, during those hours, so you can't just be out roaming around in whatever you want. It's kind of a college dorm type of setup. Um, you have a roommate, and then your room is connected to, uh, a similar room on the other side with your restroom and shower and things between, just like college dorms.
Just like college dorms, exactly.
By week ten, uh, it started, it started to feel a lot like prison. They treated us well, but you just couldn't go anywhere. Uh, this whole facility is on a military base, so you have to get on the military base. And then once you get through that, you have to get into the FBI portion, which is like its own base. It has fencing around and, um, and on the military base, they have, uh, a lot of training going on all the time. So they have, um, they have, uh, uh.
Basic training?
Well, they have basic training, they have, uh, firearms training, they have, uh, bomb training, they have aviation. So there's helicopters flying around at night with no lights on, Black Hawk heli- helicopters. So they're large and they're loud, um, and that's pretty much constant. So it took a little bit to get used to all this stuff going on. Uh, if you had any visitors, and some of the people lived, uh, not so far away, but you couldn't just have a visitor pick you up. I mean, everything was a process. Nobody can get in. You can get out, but then you may not be able to get back yet, so, um, that took a little getting used to. Uh, then in addition to that, we had, uh, some trips on weekends. Most notably was the trip to New York City, which was a planned event. Um, we had, uh, there was a hundred and eighty-two of us that went to New York out of the two hundred and fifty-eight.
Did you have to wear your uniform?
Uh, no, for that we did not.
Okay.
So they loaded us on coach buses and gave us a police escort from there all the way to New York, right to our hotel door, um, which was really nice, and traffic there is horrendous. I'll never complain about traffic around here again, because our rush hour is nothing compared to theirs. Uh, and it's constant.
You've never driven in Rome.
I have not, but I, I can't say I'd ever moved to Washington DC unless I worked next door to where I live, because it takes forever to get anywhere. So we were appreciative of that. Uh, and then certainly, once we got into New York, uh, this is something they've done for years. So the New York Police Department, uh, runs this and they coordinate everything. And I can't believe how much they packed into a couple of days. We got to see things like, uh, uh, the nine-one-one, nine-eleven memorial and museum. Uh, we got to go through, uh, One Police Plaza, saw their, uh, special operations center where they brought us all in, and then all their staff demoed everything for us. They, they, uh, had helicopters and people would dive into the river and they retrieve them and, um, I mean, everything you can imagine. And they, we had access to all of it, so, um, it was really, really nice. Um, certainly the network, there was a lot of focus, focus on networking with the other agencies there. Uh, we met a lot of people that we'll have contact with for the rest of our lives. And, and in law enforcement, really, uh, networking is vitally important because we all know that we don't all have every resource there is. And so, uh, it's nice to be able to reach out and know all these people that have expertise in various areas, uh, and, and different resources. And, uh, speaking of resources, the FBI made it very clear that, uh, many of the services that they provide, and there are too many to count, um, are available to law enforcement at no cost. If you're, for example, um, their forensic lab is the most sophisticated forensic lab in the entire world. We got a tour of that. Um, it's enormous. And most of the things they do there, if your lab does not do that, uh, type of procedure or technology, uh, you can call the FBI and they will do it for free. So it's just another, uh, I guess, network or access that we have to things far beyond what we may have available to us here. Um, and then, let's see, I won't go too far into the weeds here tonight for time's sake. Um, I talked a lot about fitness. That was a regular thing, so several days a week, we had to participate in our, our physical fitness, uh, for two hours at a time. Um, and then in addition to that, every Wednesday they had what they called fit challenges. Um, so during the week, you're divided into sections, so of the two hundred and fifty-eight people, there were five sections. So you would go through your classes in your section, so it's a pretty manageable number of people. Every Wednesday they'd have what they call fit challenges. That was all two hundred and fifty-eight of us doing some kind of fit challenge at the same time. For example, a, a five K or, uh, they, at one, one or two times, they brought us over to the military base. They have a Butler Stadium, and they had the, uh, drill sergeants run RPT for that day. So we got to run bleachers for two hours and, uh, things like that, so. But in the end, uh, it was an amazing experience. I think I gained a lot of knowledge and resources and then access to all kinds of things beyond what I had access to before. So going forward, I think it'll be absolutely beneficial to not only your department. So, going forward, I think it'll be absolutely beneficial to not only our department, but our community, so.
How many people from Minnesota were there, do you know?
Two, me and a sergeant from Shakopee.
Oh, okay.
So, they do it by region, so our region is South Dakota, North Dakota, Minnesota, and Wisconsin. Typically, Minneapolis PD and Hennepin County Sheriff's Office will send someone. They didn't have anyone in this session. But it varies, because they do four of these classes a year. So there'll be another one starting in a week or two here.
Good, well, thank you.
So, you're welcome.
Good. I didn't have any other staff reports, are there?
I do need a liaison for, we are having a Parks Commission meeting on April 12th, and we are having a Planning Commission meeting on April 25th, so I need a liaison for each.
Okay. Anybody want to do Parks?
I can do Parks, I haven't been there for a while.
Okay, and Planning, you said what date?
April 25th.
25th.
It was next Tuesday with Parks?
Correct.
Who hasn't done?
I can do it.
Have you done?
I can do Planning.
Okay. I think I can, okay. All right.
Thank you.
And, all right. With that, anything else from staff? Otherwise, we'll move on to council reports. I'll start real quick. Our Public Safety meeting was moved, so that our new administrator, who starts next week, will be part of that meeting. So we'll be meeting with the chief, myself, and Jasper Krugel, and then from St. Bonnie, their administrator and mayor. And just want to make the announcement again, May 3rd is our town hall meeting. That'll start at 6:30. It will be held here, we're planning on videotaping it, so that, okay, so that people can watch it later on on YouTube as well. Attend, it will be a meeting, so, no, there'll be a quorum by the council. And again, Trista Day is when?
May 21st.
May 21st? And are we doing the cleanup day as well?
Yes, May 14th.
May 14th. So just a couple other things to put on your calendars. Yep. And next week, I'll attend the Northwest League meeting again.
Do we know what outside agencies might be involved in the open house?
None so far.
Correct. I'll circle back with the DNR. I did ask one individual if they would be able to attend, and he was not able to. And I corresponded with another individual to ask some questions, because they, they wanted to attend virtually, unfortunately. So I will circle back with that individual and find out if we can at least get some, some guidance on what their role would be in this.
Okay.
And Ally and Allison are working on a presentation, and then we'll also now be meeting with them as well as with Jasper when he's on board. So, do a good presentation. Okay, I'm done. Anybody else?
March 25th, I met with our new city minister, Jasper Krugel, just introduced each other, and it was a very good conversation, and he's very excited to start.
March 25th, Pioneer Creek Commission had a preliminary budget meeting. Besides staff from the watershed, there was Joe Baker from Independence, Caitlin Cahill from Maple Plain, and myself. Watershed wanted to have an increase in our dues this year. I think the consensus from the three commissioners that was there, and it's only preliminary, is that we're not, don't want an increase, don't think we need an increase. That'll be passed on to our, it'll be in our meeting here in a couple of weeks. If what we propose goes through them Minatrista's costs this year, or next year, will actually drop a little bit, because in the reallocation of the fair market values amongst the six cities, we actually had a 1.18% decrease. So our cost in 2023 would be $15,064.73. That'd be a reduction of 100, about $180, so, better than a raise of $180. Also attended the Planning Commission meeting last Monday. Was a long one, a lot of discussion. The biggest discussion was in our, our ordinance 475, changing the top soil and the irrigation and the storm ponds, et cetera. And there was a lot of, a lot of discussion, it was outside the actual meat that was what they had to review and approve, but it was related, and the basic thing was the stormwater ponds. So Adam was here from WSB, he gave them some info on what we had done with Swamp, explained what Swamp was, and I added, told them there's 137 ponds, they've been identified, how far we had gotten, but the last thing we had done was in 2020, according to my calendar. So the big push from the commissioners, from the planning that were here, there was that they thought we needed to get that back on the agenda, because it's not just the new ponds going forward, but it's obviously the 137 that are out there today that need to have something done, so. I think they're favorable with us doing something, and I agree with them. So that was that.
We'll have to have that on a work session again, because I know it's been kind of set aside for a while, so. Okay?
I have a mound fire commission meeting on the 20th. That's all I have.
Okay. That's it then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. And Brian? Almost eight o'clock.